Today is Tuesday, the fourteenth of June. The time is nine o'clock. The Board is in session to conduct its open business meeting, weekly open business meeting. Two Commissioners present, Commissioner Kenyon and myself. There's a number of guests in the audience. Are there, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, we have some unfinished business on the table. I'll accept a motion to remove unfinished business from the table.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. First up, we have Agreement Number 14039-1-22, Renewal and Amendment to Agreement between Ada County Telomate LLC for Inmate Services to the Jail. Do we have any discussion on that, Ernie?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I believe the Sheriff is here at the request of Commissioner Davidson to discuss this, but seeing that Commissioner Davidson's not here, I'd ask the Sheriff to come up and just state, I think we've had some concerns with Telomate, this provider, and just wanted to know what the plans were, and we can relay that to him.
Commissioner Beck, Commissioner Kenyon, Sheriff Matt Clifford, Ada County Sheriff's Office. I think some of the questions regarding the agreement were, why are we signing the agreement when we maybe had some issues in the past? We did put out to RFI for information from other entities to see if they could provide at least a similar service. Kind of bottom line is, nobody else could. There was one other company that seemed to be somewhat competitive with Viopath, but the benefits didn't outweigh some of the cons in going with that company, where we would have to have an immense amount of downtime to switch out equipment and maybe cost us in the long run for going with a new company. So, we went ahead with Viopath. We had some customer service issues here in the recent past. Lieutenant Savage and I have met personally with Viopath to discuss those. The fact that we went out to RFI, I think they realized that we really want some customer service and we're a good customer, and they were able, they're going to be able, they're able to enhance some of the services for us as well that were not in the RFI. So, we're actually looking forward to some of the things that they'll provide for us, but that's the gist of why we would stick with them for at least the next year, to make sure that we are getting that customer service.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for going up for the RFI. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead then, and I'm going to move to approve Agreement Number 14039-1-22, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have a couple of development services issues that were delayed till today, table to today, and then the first one is Application 202-200156-A, Tracy Crane. We've had a public hearing on this, the testimony has been closed. There's been some additional documents that's been presented, and we have reviewed those documents. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I've reviewed the documents, and I just wanted to briefly address some of the lingering concerns, if you will, from the appellant, and that the ADU that was applied for does not fit the 900 square foot limit, and just that is a condition of approval, and so those additions were, will be modified, and that will be down to 900 feet, so that will be taken care of. And then the additional concerns about inoperable vehicles is not under the, really, the purview of this Board of County Commissioners, sitting as a land use planning commission, that's really under the Sheriff for Code Enforcement, and so they would need to go to Code Enforcement if they continue to have any issues with that. I've reviewed the architectural sketch and drawing, and I think it meets both the architectural and the materials requirements, and so I would be ready to make a motion, and that motion, I guess, would be to deny the appellant and uphold the planning and zoning's approval.
Okay, I will second the motion. Is there, I guess, no further discussion?
Unless you have anything you want to add?
I don't. I've reviewed the record, and I concur with your assessment. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have Application 202-200245Z-C-D-A-O-T-D, Don Morgan. This is for revised finding of fact and conclusions of law.
Trying to find this one. Leon, remind me, this one is?
I don't know if this mic's around. Chairman Commissioner, this is a revised findings to remove a condition from Central District Health that's no longer relevant because it's connecting to the sewer.
Oh, that's right, because they're hooking up the sewer. Yeah, okay, that's right.
And a development agreement as well.
Okay. Perfect, that's right. Okay, I'm going to go ahead then, if we're ready.
Yeah, we're ready, we have the revised findings, facts, and conclusions of law.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead then and make the motion to approve 202200245-ZC-DA-OTD, and approve the revised findings of facts and conclusions of law and development agreement.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up, we have Application 202-102577-A, Keith Hill. It's an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to approve a conditional use and master site plan. We reviewed some additional documentation that's been submitted, and I think we're prepared to make a decision on this one.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, this is going to take a little while. This one got pretty complex and, I think, a little complicated for folks. There was a lot of changes from initial winery then to the event center, and a lot of additional comments from the appellant, Keith Hill. So, I've read through all of our documents from the hearing, and the hearing is closed, so no additional testimony will be taken. So, going back through, I think the Board, what we need to decide here today is if we're going to approve the event center or not. And just, I think, the location of this center, based on the fact that it sets on Highway 16, and we've had probably close to 100 people in the community, state that they want a facility like this, and I think, you know, this is needed in that area, so I think that this would be a good location for an event center. So, I would be looking at approving the event center, the social hall event center application, and I'm going to go through a couple of things that I think we need to address in terms of conditions of approval for that. And I think one of them would be the production facility as originally proposed, 50 feet, Leon, I'm looking to you, 50 feet, originally it was to the north, and then we're going to go back to the south, or tell me what direction we're going again?
Madam Chair, Commissioner, that's what I understood from the testimony, yes.
So, we're moving it back to the south. Okay, so, these are conditions of approval. The production facility will go back to 50 feet to the south as originally proposed. We need additional screening for that upper parking lot, and I believe that is probably going to be in the form of trees that are probably at least six feet to begin with. We already have a noise ordinance in place, so I don't feel that there's any need for this Board to do any further restrictions that may possibly usurp our own noise ordinance, so I'm not going to add any conditions of approval for noise. I think that if this is an event center, anything under 100 people, there should be no limit. Anything over 100 people, but not to exceed 250, they're asking for 500, but I think this 250 is a good start at 24 events a year. That kicks in the ITD requirements for the modifications to the highway, so they'd have to do those modifications before they could have those events that exceed 250 people. I want to eliminate the director notification, as another condition of approval, change that. And I think we need to understand the code occupancy of the buildings, and I'm going to look to staff to go back and just make sure that the buildings that are being built, that that code occupancy and that 250 limit is adequate. I think in the summer, it might be fine being outside, but in the winter is what I'm concerned about, so we just need to make sure that that lines up. Parking spaces, I think we're going to need more than 83 if we're going to allow 250 capacity, so I'd like to see some overflow parking up to 150. And I think in exchange for granting this, I think I'd like, you can debate me on this, but I think that the hours of operation, I'd like to see them close at 6:00 PM on Monday and Tuesday. I think they've got enough on their hands with 10 to 10 and the extra event center and the winery. And that's it, that's all we've got.
Okay.
And I'm going to look to staff for any questions, if they need clarification.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon did want to point out, with these modifications, these conditions, we would recommend, again, tabling with part of your motion to make sure we can craft a findings of fact to support these items.
We need a table date, Annie.
Far out, Richard, would you like to go? And do you want it to be another open business meeting?
June 28th.
Anything you want to add?
Yeah, I would like to add the notion that this would come up for review in a year, and the applicant can give us an idea as if these are overly restrictive, or how it's working in the neighborhood. I think that would be, yeah.
Condition of approval?
I think that'd be beneficial to all parties concerned.
Okay. All right, I'll go ahead then and make the motion to deny the appellant, Keith Hill, and approve the...
Well, no, it would be denying the, they appealed the approval.
So, do you have the motion there?
I don't have the motion there, but...
Okay, walk me through this, just to make sure, because we have two, we have two appeals on one application, so this is a little tricky.
And Madam Chair, Commissioners, I think you could deny both appeals, uphold the Planning and Zoning Commission's original decision, and add the conditions that you've asked staff to include and bring back for revised findings on the 28th of June.
Okay, so I'm going to deny both appeals, I don't need to read the project number again, I don't think, and uphold planning and zoning's approval of the application by the Bouchards, and table this for revised findings of facts and conclusions of law to June 28th, and the additional conditions of approval will read as follows. The production facility will be built as originally proposed, that's 50 feet to the south. There'll be additional screening for the upper parking lot, that will be trees at least six feet in height. We don't need a noise ordinance, so if there was anything in the conditions of approval, let's go ahead and strike that. Under 100 people, there'll be no limit. Over 100 people, but not to exceed 250 events, 24 a year. We'll have a review in one year. The review will be by the executive or the director, Richard Beck. Do you want that in front of the Board for review, or just for our director?
Well, I think that'd be up to the director and the applicant, if they want to...
Let's just, let's stick with the director right now, and if the director feels it needs to come before the Board, then we can do that. We will eliminate the director notification on events, and we'll need to make sure that the buildings where they're having indoor events, that the occupancy meets the code, and we're going to allow for up to 150 parking spaces to accommodate, or, yeah, excuse me, to accommodate the 250 capacity. They have 83 now, correct? So, the addition could be like an overflow parking area that would be, that would meet with fire, obviously, fire code. And we're going to change the hours of operation so that they're going to close from 6:00 PM to, they're going to close at 6:00 PM on Mondays and Tuesdays. And the ITD requirements will need to be met before they have events exceeding 200 or 100 people up to 250. I think I covered it. Yeah, I think you have a question.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, no, I think, I think we understand what you want us to...
You've got it.
Yeah, we'll bring it back to you on the 28th of June, so...
Okay.
Have a question or comment?
Commissioner Kenyon, I can hear you add in your motion, Commissioner Beck's requirement that it come back, that the applicant and the neighbors, or if you reviewed in a year...
I did.
Yeah, that was in there.
Yeah, it is. Okay, that's it.
Okay, I'll second the motion. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, next up, we have Final Ranking and Request for Enter into Fee Negotiations for RFQ 22064.
Sorry? Another item on the agenda here.
Yep, you're on the agenda.
Hi, Bob. Good morning. Well, good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Kenyon. Before you this morning is a Final Ranking and Request to Enter Fee Negotiations for RFQ 22064, Upper Design Services for Ada County Juvenile Services Outdoor Space. The Evaluation Committee has completed the evaluations and would like to submit a letter of the final ranking for your consideration.
You can read the letter, read the letter for the record?
Yes, be happy to. It's a letter dated June 14th, 2022, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding RFQ 22064. Dear Members of the Board, The Evaluation Committee has evaluated the three responses for RFQ 22064. A short list of qualified candidates was determined by evaluation scoring. The short list of qualified firms ranked in order of evaluation scoring are as follows. Number one, Lombard Conrad Architects with a score of 91.67. Number two, Cushing Terrell with a score of 80.33, and number three is KM Engineering LLP with a score of 68. The Evaluation Committee would like to request the Board's approval of the final rankings and permission to enter into fee negotiations, beginning with the number one ranked proposer. If negotiations are successful, the Operations Department will put back on the Board's agenda for contract award consideration. Thank you.
Okay.
Want me to make a motion?
Yes, make a motion.
All right, I move to accept the final rankings for RFQ 22064, Upper Design Services for Ada County Juvenile Services Outdoor Space, and authorize Operations Department to enter into fee negotiations, starting with the number one ranked firm, Lombard?
Yes.
Okay. And they were at the 91.67.
Yes, Lombard Conrad Architects with a score of 91.67.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second the motion. Without further discussion, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Commissioners, appreciate it.
You're super excited about this. Allison, super excited, yay.
Okay, we have two resolutions for discussion. I'll open the public hearing on Resolution Number 2759, Resolution Adjusting the Ada County Budget for the American Rescue Plan Act EMS Premium Pay. Is there any discussion?
No, Mr. Chair, I've looked it over, and this is for EMS, and I'd move to approve the resolution, 2759 is listed on the agenda.
I'll close the public hearing on Resolution Number 2759, and I'll accept the motion.
I'll do it again then. I move to approve Resolution 2759, as listed on the agenda.
Thank you, I'll second the motion. Call for the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on Resolution Number 2760, Resolution for Sole Source Procurement of Insecticide Product, FY02022. Is there any discussion?
Well, Mr. Chair, I can't pronounce any of the pesticides, so I'm not even going to try. But I'm going to go ahead, if you're ready to close it.
I'm ready. I'll close the public hearing on Resolution Number 2760.
All right.
I'll accept the motion.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and approve 2760, it's listed on the agenda.
Thank you, I'll call for the, I'll second the motion and call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have a two-change orders, is there any discussion? Change order number one, Ada County Sheriff's Office, Phase Two, Fence and Landscape Project, a decrease of $9,486. And we have an Ada County Courthouse Public Defender remodel, Number 2021, Agreement Number 14247, a decrease of $2,382.76.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to shout out to Bruce and Team in Operations, to, they're doing everything they possibly can to keep costs down, and that's pretty miraculous in this economy, when everything is sky high, so I really appreciate that. I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the two change orders, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second the motion and call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion on the alcohol licenses.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including six catering permits, three new licenses, three license transfers, and two license renewals, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second the motion and call for the question. Is there any further discussion? I haven't hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, is Mr. McGrane here? No. Trent here? Do you have a good report?
Only good ones.
Only good ones.
Fantastic report.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Budgets are underway.
I've heard that.
We got through like a quarter of an inch of our...
That's the report, but we're staying positive. That quarter of an inch has been going well so far, so that's what we're neck deep in, and we'll continue for the next couple of weeks, so...
Okay.
Any other questions? That's all we have, report from Clerk's office.
I don't, thank you.
I just appreciate the summary that you gave us.
Good summary you gave us, I appreciated that.
You managed to take a binder like this of information and put it into two pages, so, three, but that was very, very helpful.
Yes, thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion on the Claims Journal.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated June 10th, 2022.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have personnel actions, may I have a motion on the personnel actions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain in file in the Commissioner's office.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have our distinguished assessor with us? We do.
He is here this morning, Mr. Chairman. All I have to say is, we've received 195 appeals to date. Last year, we had at this time 93, so about 100%. We had 500 appeals last year, so I don't know what kind of conclusions we can draw from that, other than the fact that we know that we have, we're going to have more appeals this year than last year.
Didn't you hear the Chair said only good news?
Well, I'll tell you, I was prepared for that, because if he was going to ask for good news, I was going to say, I don't have anything to report this morning.
Well, I'd say, that's good, that's good news. I mean, people are paying attention to your assessment notices, and they're interested in them, that's, that's a good public engagement, and then hopefully, we'll get our, your staff to review them, and maybe they can pare it down a little bit.
They did a fabulous job last year, so...
They do a good job, and they do the best they can, they just want to, want to make sure that we come up with accurate values, and oftentimes, when we get these phone calls, we get additional information, then we can make some adjustments based upon that.
Sure, well, we need to follow the law.
We do, without a doubt, yes.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, our distinguished treasurer is with us, too.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Commissioner Kenyon?
Good morning.
Our report this morning is the...
Our report this morning is the investment report for the month of May, and with me for that is Tim Klein.
Morning, Commissioners. For May, we didn't have a lot of activity. We had no new purchases. We had no maturities. So our portfolio, because we've been watching interest rates closely and the Fed has been moving on that, there's been a lot of volatility in market pricing. However, since we invest in fixed income securities that are very safe, we don't see huge moves there. But it does affect our market value compared to our book value. We received a little over two-hundred-thousand dollars in interest in May. One good thing to think about when you, when you look out into the future, and the Fed is meeting today, they intend to make a decision tomorrow on interest rates. We're hearing point-seven-five, seventy-five basis point interest rate increase potentially. And so that, that does have an effect on our portfolio, the market values. However, it also gives us opportunity to invest in new higher-yielding investments. Next month, well, actually, June, we're in June now, so it'll be in next month's report. We did have one maturity in June, on the tenth, the two-point-five million. So that gives us an opportunity to invest, and so we're basically doing a kind of a laddering strategy, I guess you could say. And as those yields climb, we'll continue to move new money into those and take advantage of those opportunities.
Looks like we've got another one in September, two million.
Another two million.
We could reinvest.
In terms of our balancing with the auditor, just a couple items on there. There's a couple of checks, I think, two checks totaling two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars, so you see a discrepancy there. And then an A. C. H. payment, and we've seen those before. Those tend to hang on there one day, and the way those work is basically A. C. H. is automated clearinghouse. That's a type of electronic payment. The auditor's office records that the money has gone out on their books, and then a day later is when we see it go out on, on the actual bank account. So this is one of those one-day items where we still show we have two-hundred-and-fifty, roughly, thousand dollars more than they're showing, and it's just one of those things that happened to hit on the last day of the month, so nothing of concern there.
Thank you.
You expect the feds to raise the rates a half or three-quarters of a point?
Well, my, my personal opinion is they probably should do three-quarters of a point. They probably should have done more in the past, and if they're going to get ahead of inflation or put the brakes on inflation, they're going to have to do that. So they're really between a rock and a hard place, because either thing they do is going to be very disruptive. I did notice, I look every day at the yield curve, and the yield curve is basically looking at the various bonds and notes out there. When you begin to see an inverted yield curve, it is, does a very good job of indicating a future recession coming down. And I watch that daily. It just takes a minute. You look on, online, and you can see that. And today, for the first time, I saw the yield curve inverted on the three, the five, the seven, the ten, and the thirty-year. That's the first time I've seen that. And when, when we see that happen, it isn't that much longer down the road before we have a recession. So doesn't mean it will happen, but it has a very high correlation to a future recession. So I think they do need to raise it at least probably seventy-five points. The Fed, I've noticed, tends to do it incrementally and smaller, because they probably don't want to shock the system too much. But we'll probably see another one in June or in July as well.
That means our yields will be going up, doesn't it?
Our yields will be going up. Another good thing to think about is we have a lot of money in our L. G. I. at the State Treasurers, and that's invested in primarily shorter-term fixed-income investments. And, and because of that, they turn over their portfolio pretty, pretty rapidly, because they mature and they have to reinvest. And so we are seeing a pretty good uptick in the yields from month to month. It wasn't long ago, we were at, you know, point-one. This month's report shows point-four. We're already, I think, at point-six. And with one-hundred-and-seventy-million dollars sitting over there, that really makes a big difference for us, and so the county's gaining more interest each month because of that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, moving on, we have approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have grants. We have grant number two-two-zero-five-B, grant award from the Ada Department of Juvenile Corrections for Safe Teen Assessment Center. That's that Harbor thing, right? Yeah. Okay, do we have a motion?
I would love to have Allison come up and just share with us.
Well, I would love to have Allison share with us, too.
The success story, this is awesome. Allison just brought in six-hundred-and-nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety dollars into the county on a grant.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, yes, it's an exciting day for juvenile services. Thank you for your support as we have been through this journey thus far. We're really pleased, and our understanding is that the Department of Juvenile Corrections was, was very excited about our proposal. Amy Herrig's here, and it was our grant application was beautiful, seventy-two pages long. Now the hard work begins. We didn't even, we celebrated for a couple of seconds and said, oh, my gosh, we have to get going. So there's a lot to do, but as you know, this is a best-practice, evidence-based solution to keeping kids out of the criminal justice system in the first place. And this opportunity fell upon us, and we're going to seize it and run, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Well, good.
I love the direction that you're taking, the department. I think it's healthy, and it's good for the community, and it's great for the kids. We can keep them out of the system, that's the best we can do, and help support them in the community.
Now, it's based on that, oh, I'm sorry. It's based on that Harbor program out of, out of Las Vegas, isn't it?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. There are eighty-one centers like this around the country. The model that is probably the most workable for us is modeled after the Harbor, and you did, you were there to hear Mr. Martin speak about it.
Yes, that was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, yeah. Thanks for bringing him in, and we're seeing some fruits of the labors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you much. Appreciate that.
Very excited.
Yes. Now, did we have a motion on that?
No, I would love to move to approve grant number two-two-zero-five-b and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
I will second the motion. Call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
It's only seventy-two pages long.
Okay. Okay, we have ratification of interim event agreements. There was once, some of them signed on June eighth by Commissioner Kenyon, along with one new interim event agreement, ten commercial exhibitor agreements, and one concession air agreement. Is there discussion and a motion?
Well, I had to come back in and sign the agreement, so grappling could go on down there.
Oh, we got to have grappling.
I move to approve and ratify the interim event agreement, signed by myself, Commissioner Kenyon, on June eighth, two thousand twenty-two, as identified on the agenda. Approve the remaining one interim event agreement, ten commercial exhibitor event agreements, and one concession air agreement, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
All right, I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. And show of hands, how many of you participated in grappling?
Yeah.
Every day.
Okay. Well, good. We'll now take up agreements. We have a number of agreements on the agenda. I've read the agreements. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Go ahead, move to approve the six agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye. All right?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll be in recess.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.